Wrapping up lunch, but we'll just kind of have it be a working finish to lunch. So thanks everyone for being here this morning. And let's just go ahead and dive into it. I think the is the first item on our agenda is the review of the grants. Is that right? Okay. And John is here to help us out with this and other items. So we'll just get started. John, thanks for being here.
Thank you. Good morning. Welcome to our budget work session on expenditures for fiscal year 2024. Departments submitted requests by the end of January for this budget. These requests have been reviewed to establish the version of the budget we are now calling fiscal year 2024 first pass. This is a look at the remainder of our budget calendar for fiscal year 24. We had our retreat in December. And we had a capital work session two weeks ago. Today, we are discussing large expenditure requests in the first pass budget to include grants ending in fiscal year 24 and requests to be sustained by the general fund, personnel, key operating drivers, and funding of capital. We will return next month on April 25th to discuss revenues, including any proposed changes to our fee schedule and how those revenues support expenditures. On May 9th, we will hear from our education partners regarding their fiscal year 24 local requests, as well as any requests from fire districts that wish to adjust their tax rate. We plan on delivering a recommended budget with a budget message on May 16th. The following meeting on June 6th, we will hold a public hearing for the budget and move to adoption of the fiscal year 24 budget on June 20th. Our agenda is as follows. We will whoops. We will begin by discussing grants that are coming to an end prior to or during the next fiscal year, decide how and or whether the services provided by those grants should continue to be funded. Next, we will review personnel to include position requests made by departments and discuss the annual cost of living adjustment and that calculation. After that, we will talk through operating budgets that align with the priorities. You said at our budget retreat in December, as well as other large increases. We'll review commissioner budget priorities and receive updates on the septic repair program and the homeowner grant program. We'll wrap up our agenda with the discussion of information technology requests and funding of proposed capital projects. There are eight grants currently funded by other revenue sources coming to an end in fiscal year 24. You received a memo in advance of this meeting to provide detail on those grants. That memo is also in your packet today. At last year's budget retreat, there was some discussion from you about assessing grants on their evidence as opposed to continuation of funding without some type of evaluation. In summary, continuing to fund all of these grants would require almost $2.7 million and adding 12 full-time positions to the headcount. Several grants use contracted services for staff, and there are 18 such positions funded that way. Please note that some of these requests are only for partial year funding and will require additional funding in future years. I'm going to discuss each of these grants, and I have grant managers here in the room if there are additional questions. Going to start with the Family Justice Center Governor's Crime Commission Grant. This was originally awarded in January of 2016 and will expire in September. This request is to continue contracted services with community partners that staff the Family Justice Center for the remaining nine months of the fiscal year totaling $468,000. Future year costs will need to account for the full year approximately $624,000. Any thoughts? We can I we can ask questions as we go.
Just one question I'd have as you review each grant is whether we've sort of assessed opportunities to seek renewed grant funding or think there may be other grants in the pipeline that could potentially bring funding in for these for these different areas.
No, on this particular grant, this particular this funding stream is no longer available to continue funding the Family Justice Center.
And so with this one specifically, these would all be contract positions?
They would.
Yes, and with what you have here, it looks like it's partially funded through F.
It's yes, it's on the federal fiscal year, so it runs through September 30th.
Okay.
And then it would require nine months of funding.
Okay.
And so.
Pacific questions Tiffany's here as the head of that.
And then just kind of a broader question, whenever we're funding contract positions in an ongoing basis, how how are we assessing that?
Generally, contracts do have some performance metrics written into them. They vary by contract. So I'll have to defer to the contract manager on that one.
Yeah, we do we do put performance measures in the contracts that are for all of them specifically for the Family Justice Center because it's being funded through two separate federal grants. There is different reporting requirements for each grant, and we kind of take that instead of duplicating work. We take those performance measures and tie it into the work that they're doing. And we did assess what other jurisdictions do, especially those in North Carolina. The Family Justice Center is about bringing the partners to the table and having a coordinated intake specialist approach. Other jurisdictions actually have the staff intake specialists to do the staff to do the work. And then they refer to the onsite partners. Before I got here, of course, the initial decision was to contract the intake specialist to the folks that we deem was experts in domestic violence to do that work. And so we're funding those intake specialists, but also the services that are provided onsite, such as the IPV counselor, the sexual assault counselor, the case managers and court advocates, and one legal assistant and an attorney to help survivors navigate the legal system.
I realize this is a contract, but a lot of grants do look at sustainability and capacity building so that it's not always a contracted service. Have these organizations looked at their own internal capacity to sustain this work and these positions?
So I think we all have been hit with the funding cuts that the federal government and these grants have done. I think last year we had to supplement some of the funding from VOKA. That's the other federal funding that we receive because the way the funds were administered, they had a decreased amount of funding available. And then same thing with GCC. We have had this grant since the county decided to pursue a Family Justice Center to do a multi-disciplinary approach. This year GCC said that's no longer a funding option. So they're also experiencing cuts in domestic violence and intimate partner and sexual assault services as well.
To Commissioner Edwards' point there, I would be willing to consider continuing the funding for FY24, but looking at what could be that long-term sustainable plan for the organizations so that it kind of gives them a bit more of a run-up there, but actually looking at that for that long-term plan rather than necessarily counting on this as the continuation.
I do think moving forward outside of this, that's something to to consider and think about as we do pursue grants and contracted services is what can those organizations do to sustain the programming and the cost on their own at some point in time. It's pretty common with nonprofits, so.
And this service is particular to the Family Justice Center. They also do their services and they're getting funding through outside sources for services beyond what the FJC is doing.
And with this, I think Chair Newman's mentioned several times when we're accepting grants or we're looking at doing that, that we really have to be thinking about this as well because at some point, most of those grants end. And and we do want to, we always get very excited about accepting them, but then, you know, what's that long-term plan?
I do want to make sure you go back and touch on what Tiffany said, so it's not lost. This specific funding is for the Family Justice Center, not just for those organizations. They do work outside of the Family Justice Center. So the real question is, do we want a Family Justice Center? And if so, are we going to look into funding outside of grants? Because the intimate partner violence, the sexual assault, they have other work that they do in the community, not just at the Family Justice Center. So if we're not funding this beyond 2024, in effect, we are saying that we would not be having a Family Justice Center in the form and shape that it is in today.
And for my edification, can would you mind without naming names, but what the positions are? Just so I can wrap my mind around what positions are doing what in our community?
Okay, so the Family Justice Center provides onsite services in one location. We have to have an intake specialist, so this grant funds actually two intake specialists. There are a total of four, which is funded, the other two are funded in another DOJ grant. That does the essential services of having that one stop shop. How do I get access to services? Then the intake specialist refers them to the onsite staff. In addition to being the two intake specialists, there is an intimate partner violence counselor and an intimate partner case manager, a court advocate, so the person that helps someone walk them through filling out a 50B or the process. The legal assistant and the attorney helps with filings, civil filings, divorce filings, protective orders. And then there is a child. The YW say provides onsite child services, so that position is funded through the grant. Before the FJC, folks would have to do use the YW drop-off center. They would have to drive to Piscile Legal, then they would have to drive to all the other services. And so when we look back at the time it took, most people stopped going for services because they had to fill out so much paperwork, drive, fire and transportation, childcare. So the Family Justice Center puts it all in one location.
Thank you.
A question I have is, do we need to be looking at this from the beginning and just laying all the cards on the table? And by that, I mean, if we know a grant we're getting for the Family Justice Center is something that we need, you know, and it's important to the community, but upfront, shouldn't we be telling ourselves, this is a good start, but we're going to have to keep it going from the general fund down the road? Because, you know, the way I look at it, and I've looked at it over the years, especially working with a lot of nonprofits, any grants at best, folks, are temporary. They're not going to be there, and especially when you're dealing with the government. I guarantee you. But that's what I want to see so that we can be realistic in, you know, when we start budgeting, when we start looking ahead, that we look at what we really need. And it might be in some cases, some grants we want to pass by, we don't need. But that's the concern I have is that we, and it goes back to Brownie, you've been asking this, and I agree with you. Up front, when we get and when I look at the budget this time, I look at how many in reading that, you know, positions we have, and a lot of these come from grants, folks. And we were looking at it upfront as temporary, but it's something that appears that we need. But let's be realistic in looking at these grants. That's the concern I have.
I agree with that. I imagine especially around justice initiatives and things that involve people's safety, we're going to see more of that, this being a starting point for something that will be a continuous funding ask because we're not expecting a reduction in restraining order requests or intimate partner violence by any metric that I'm looking at. Is that fair?
Well, in 2015, we tied for the highest homicide IPV in the state, right? We have seen a reduction. We have not held that title, and I think Buncombe County wants to hold that title. And before we even sought out grants, it was what is best practice. Family Justice Center was best practice that had been done around the nation. And so I believe it was a partnership with the county and partners to come to the table to develop what it would look like. And then funding was sought, and we was fortunate to receive two federal grants at the time. But it's been a few years now, and so their priorities are also shifting.
I guess I come at this conversation and then some of the other grants that we'll be discussing, really with an understanding that this work is pretty integral to how we pursue our strategic priorities and and that part of our responsibility is to shift into ongoing funding and also to aggressively seek philanthropic support when there are opportunities for that. But I think, you know, for my starting point in these conversations is absolutely we should take a fresh look at these things, but also with programming that is providing essential, and in some of these cases, certainly life-saving or life-changing services to residents of Buncombe County, that that we should be sort of prepared for it to cycle into our budgeting process. And and, you know, I would again just sort of appreciate updates as we move through this on sort of what kind of prospecting has been done because some of these grants we'll review, I think, are in areas where there are quite a bit of grant dollars flowing, whether from the state or federal government or philanthropic foundations. But but that's kind of where I start the conversations, certainly with something like Family Justice Center. I think it's providing an indispensable service in the community. And folks have worked extraordinarily hard in the last seven years to kind of get it through its startup phase. And I would support us continuing that.
I certainly think we we want to continue this successful model as well. So I mean, I'll just speak up for that and conceptually, but should we? There's no other questions on this one. Let's keep going through the list. This is the first past discussion. We're not expecting to make, you know, definitive decisions on most of these kind of questions today. This is kind of to get the conversation going about what the, you know, what the items are that are on the table as we get to the budget this year. Thank you.
Next grant we're discussing, jail and prison reentry grant. And this was awarded by Dogwood Health Trust in November 2020, expired in March of this year. Remaining funding for this year now resides in the opioid settlement fund. This request is for $310,000 for contracted services.
This is JRC?
This is the staff that works in the community with RHA. This is our partnership with RHA.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
When did this grant start?
November 2020.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's no questions, just kind of keep going through these.
Okay. So the Department of Justice awarded a community-oriented policing grant to the sheriff's office in August 2020, and this grant ends in June. This funds two undercover detectives and an arson investigator, and the grant included an agreement to fund these positions for a fourth year as this three-year grant concludes. This request is for $297,000 in fiscal year 24 for salary and benefits for the positions and would require an additional three full-time employees added to headcount.
And so are these the only positions that the sheriff is requesting?
That through grants.
Through grants?
Yes.
Okay.
Ready to move forward? The Mobile Medication Assisted Treatment Team Grant was awarded by Dogwood Health Trust to expand community paramedicine response in November 2021 and expired in January of this year, with funding for the remainder of the fiscal year coming from the opioid settlement fund. The request is for $207,000 for contracted services next year. The Behavioral Health Planning Grant was awarded by Dogwood Health Trust in November 2021 and expires at the end of the calendar year. This request is to fund two full-time positions, the behavioral health manager and a management analyst for the remaining six months of fiscal year 24. The request is for $135,000 and would add two full-time positions. This is a partial year cost, and a future full year's cost would be approximately $270,000.
And this is this is a basically to just recommend make recommendations on how to invest the opioid settlement funds? That's the purpose of this?
Yes, this is Victoria Rekord, the Behavioral Health Manager's position, and Kathleen Plackney is the management analyst who works with her.
So the opioid funding is a multi-year thing, right? So it's not like it's all going to just come and go really quickly. But it's also not, you know, I mean, there's a lot of ideas for how to program this fund. So I guess I guess just one question I would have around this as we think about it is, it sounds like we there's probably a near-term need, like we're really getting into this now, right? Like this is becoming a reality. But if it is continued, maybe thoughts around like, how how long will it need to be maintained? Would it need to be maintained for like the life of the opioid funding? Or at some point, would we kind of have, you know, the plan for how those funds would be invested? You know, pretty effectively dialed in? So I don't have to answer that right now, but that'd be a question I'd have, or if there are any thoughts on that.
And there are because we have actually used this position a little differently. We've moved she does work 100% on that opioid settlement to tell us about the engagement with our community and following the MOA. But beyond that, we've also engaged Victoria and Kathleen, the analysts, into more behavioral health, the bigger conversation around how do we look at behavioral health in our community, which includes our homeless conversation, how that impact the mental health conversation with B- hook. So we have expanded that opportunity to use since we have the staff and the skill set to use it beyond the opioid funding.
So so the scope of the positions going forward, it wouldn't just be about, hey, I recommend this much money for this, this much.
Right.
It's it's more than just funding recommendations for specific.
And it's the oversight and the management of those funds as well.
Thank you, that's helpful.
The Communicable Disease and Infection Prevention Team was funded beginning in March 2022 with a time-limited agreement addendum for communicable disease support ending in May of this year. This request is to add and fund six full-time positions associated operating costs for $725,000.
And to Commissioner Bees for our request and of what other funds are available for this, the money started off in COVID, right? When you talk about communicable disease, and the state sent us money to make sure that we're in our community, serving the need. Currently, the staff, the commissioners fund our FQAC, the Federal Qualified Health Centers, and to make sure that we're serving our community as a whole. This is doing some of that same work. So if you're thinking about that, you could use some of the money that we use for that community service to fund this mobile team that's also in our community. That would be one way to fund this without going into general fund.
And then can you share some more about this mobile team? If I'm remembering correctly, I think I remember being pretty excited about the potential of what they'll be doing. And I think it was in December when we had our retreat, I'd mentioned that some of the rural community centers were asking for this service. And at that time, you said it wasn't up and running, I think?
The staff is here, we have to, there's a van, there's actually a van that's still not here. Is that right? I know Stoney is in the audience, or Ellis, anyone wants to speak to this? But the biggest thing, it wasn't up and running yet. We had ordered a van, it hadn't been here yet, but they were going in their personal cars to do this work at that point.
Good afternoon. Currently, we do have a transit van that we are using. We are waiting on the arrival of what I call our mini Winnie that has actual exam rooms inside. The team was fully hired by the end of June, and they have already completed 104 events, served 1,795 clients. The majority of the activities starting off was related around vaccine, COVID, MPOCs, and then harm reduction, hepatitis A and B. But moving more in towards adding in STI services, reproductive health services, and including wraparound services, also harm reduction services. So continuing to add more services.
Thank you.
If it's, you know, if it's funded just from the county, I mean, in the past, we've got a grant, we had to just basically follow the grant, right? So if the county funds it, we could do whatever we want with it, right? I guess that's the question, sort of like, you know, sort of, I guess COVID-19 is more in the rearview mirror. I mean, what what's the vision for what the scope of health services that would be provided are, right? Because, I mean, obviously, that was like a big, you know, society-level health emergency, which is not Hoover, but it's we're in a totally different phase now. So what would be the services that would be offered if it's perpetuated?
Well, I think that's what's really important is that we're partnering with the different communities and assessing the needs of what they want and what they need access to and providing those services because it could vary from community to community. And then, you know, also bringing in different like economic services, getting people Medicaid access. So yes, what the community needs is what we could provide services through that team, just outside of our building.
It's like when we when we first started envisioning this this model way before COVID came and way before this funding came, I think the funding, back to what I think Al said, to me, the reason you take a grant is because it already fits into your vision. And that grant gives you a jumpstart to accomplish a vision you already have, not change your vision to accommodate a grant. You know, because then that it runs out, and all of a sudden, you're like, oh, do we keep doing this or not? So what we were hearing from our community, and it really proved really true during COVID, is that everyone in the community is not comfortable coming into the city to receive their services. And we knew that. And what a lot of counties do is like, well, let's build, let's build human service centers all throughout the county. But that's not very cost-effective, and it really doesn't work unless you're a large community of like, the only counties I've seen this work in are Buncombe and Mecklenburg, but they're over a million people. So really, there are multiple counties in one, I would say. But this mobile service during COVID really allowed us to reach communities that historically were not coming to see us for their public health needs. And we can do this beyond public health. So I see it as a social determinants of health thing, too. Medicaid expansion is a good example. We're going to need to enroll almost 16,000 people in Medicaid that have not gotten Medicaid before. And I'm telling you, because I know a lot of the population we will serve, they're not going to walk into the building at 40 Cox to apply. But if we roll this, if we roll this bus up where they live and go to them and say, just come over to this table, we'll sign you up for Medicaid, we'll be a lot more successful. So my relatives, when I was growing up, we're country folk, and folks say, why haven't you come to see me? You haven't seen me in six months. And this is what you would always hear from that relative, the road runs both ways. And so this is us getting on the road and going to our community instead of asking them to come and see us. So for that reason and what ever, so we believe we actually can fund it with no thing. I think that keeping this mobile approach going is absolutely the right thing for the future of human services in Buncombe County.
So the vision is really that any service offered through public health or HHS or even a related piece of work under another department could be sort of delivered through this. I know there's a lot still to be unpacked about how Medicaid expansion will roll out, but do we have any early sense of whether there will be allocations to counties around how we staff, getting folks enrolled, and whether there might be some offset opportunities if we're going to use the van for that purpose?
Actually, thinking about preparing a briefing for you guys next Tuesday to really unpack Medicaid a little bit. But yes, there's early conversations from the state that they would fund some of those positions for us.
Thank you.
Would it would it still be, so it's called Communicable Disease and Infection Prevention? I mean, would it would it be even potentially kept as that brand or rebranded or renamed? Because it does sound like it's that's that's pretty specific, but it may be more broad.
And that was related to the agreement addenda for which funded it. And so and the mobile unit was also funded with agreement addenda money from COVID money. And we have been waiting about two and a half years for the mobile unit to get here. The chassis is complete now, is what I hear.
We can change that name to something that is not a mouthful.
Okay, I, I'd love to, I mean, it's a good conversation. I'd love to just, maybe if there's any other written materials that kind of flesh some of this out, too, around what this would look like for the future, too. I'd love to learn more, read more. All right. Thank you very much.
Safer Together Grant was awarded in September twenty nineteen by the Department of Justice under the Fiscal Year Nineteen Comprehensive Opioid Abuse Site-Based Program. And it will expire in September of twenty twenty-three. This request is to sustain contracted services for both public health and emergency services, as well as fund a harm reduction coordinator full-time position in public health for nine months at four hundred sixty-one thousand dollars. A future full-year cost will run approximately six hundred fifteen thousand dollars. Yes, this, this could be sustained by opioid settlement dollars.
So one thing I would like, and I guess it can be at a future meeting, but you mentioned several of, on several of these, you mentioned the opioid settlement dollars. So I guess I'd like to get a better sense of, of that overall picture and, and how this can tie in. Because I know in some of our previous discussions, when we were looking at accepting certain grants, we knew that that funding was coming, but in some of these, it looks like we were doing even prior to that potentially. But just kind of would like to have a better overall sense.
The Adult Protective Services Essential Services Grant was a distribution of one-time federal funding that expired in December twenty twenty-two. The request is to sustain that programming with thirty-five thousand dollars.
And I'm interested in hearing more about this program, because this is something I hear in the community that there's a need for. When I'm out, often, these are some of the comments, so I don't think I really realized that we had this program specifically.
Yeah, so this was a one-time funding from the state. And actually, there's some recent chatter that we might be getting more funding from the state again this year. It's coming pretty late, but I think the success of the program probably is what's caused that. So we use these funds, like if we go into a situation where there's an adult protective services case and we get out there and there's some real issues in the home that are keeping, that could potentially keep that person, not allow them to remain in their home, then we can offer a level of support to prevent placement. And a, a good example of this would be hoarding situations. So we've used these dollars in the last year in pretty severe hoarding situations where the, the home was no longer habitable, but the person's health condition didn't require them to have to go into placement. So we would contract with the company that comes in and does that cleanup, allow that person to stay at home. So it's really a benefit all the way around. This, these funds also really dovetail nicely into the work we're doing in our code, our unified code enforcement team. Because sometimes our code enforcement team will go out on an issue that looks like a, a code violation. But really, it's perhaps a behavioral health issue or perhaps a social issue that that person can no longer meet. And that we can even leverage some of these funds if they're open for APS. Now, the beauty of them being county dollars is we have a little more flexibility over how we spend them. But it allows us to work with the code enforcement team. We actually have an APS supervisor now that sits on that team and kind of address the human side of, of not complying with the code. Because maybe the person's elderly, they used to, could take their trash out, but they no longer can. So they've been stacking it up on their front porch. And then after a while, that becomes an issue for the neighborhood. So these are the kind of, of services that we provide through these APS essential funds.
Wonderful, I'm glad to know about this and it sounds, sounds definitely needed in the community from what I hear. And we want to be able to keep people in their homes, so thank you for that work. Thank you.
Circling back on grants in total, are there any other thoughts?
I know the information is, I think, included on each of the slides. Maybe if you could update this last slide to also show the fiscal impact of twelve months of operation of all the positions. So we really have a sense of, I mean, really the question is, do you want to keep all of this permanently or not? So if we could show what the, like, the, the full impact really is, that'd be helpful. I don't have any other questions right now. Any other questions on the grants at this time? All right, thanks, Tony.
Ray, we will move on to personnel requests for the new budget year. And these personnel requests are independent of those associated with the grants that we just talked about. There are currently fifty-four position requests in the first pass budget, fifty-three of which are in the general fund and one in the internal service fund, insurance fund, at total budget of four point eight million dollars. There's also a handout in your packet specifically about these positions.
So one, I thought that the grant positions, some of those are actually included in this list that you're showing us, right? Okay.
They are, they're on the handout. But for our discussion here, we'll be discussing, discussing the positions that, we've already discussed the grant positions. So we'll be discussing the other positions. So regarding the priorities established in our budget retreat, there are position requests related to three of those priorities, continuum of care and homelessness, public safety expansion, and infrastructure needs. Regarding the continuum of care, the library has requested a library safety associate at PAC Library to replace contracted security and connect library visitors with social service referrals to address job assistance, food insecurity, and mental health support. Planning has asked for a homeless coordinator position at our last board meeting. While this will be covered by LAPP salary for the remainder of this year, this is fully funded in the fiscal year twenty-four first pass.
And that's the same position that we've talked about before, right? That was recommended by the national consultants?
Yes. Those requests represent a hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars of the first pass budget. For public safety expansion, nine-one-one operations has requested two positions, an administrative coordinator to provide administrative support for purchasing and contracting, and a training specialist to support the significant training needs in this department. Emergency services has requested eighteen part-time paramedics to run another peak time response vehicle and cover other paramedic time off and vacancies. They've also requested emergency medical services operations manager to provide more support to supervisors and workforce development. Additionally, they have requested a community paramedic program coordinator to meet the programmatic needs of this program as it continues to evolve. CAPE has requested an information and communications specialist specifically for managing public information related to nine-one-one and emergency services. Sheriff's Office has a request for two analysts to support their growing information technology needs. And these requests represent two million dollars of the first pass budget. Related to infrastructure, infrastructure planning, the planning department's requested stormwater coordinator to meet increasing needs related to development, an addressing manager, and a zoning code enforcement officer. These requests represent three hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars of the first pass budget.
The stormwater is a code enforcement position, basically reviewing new development proposals and monitoring of development activity for compliance with sedimentation and erosion control standards. Is that correct? Great. We've heard some words of support for that in our environmental subcommittee, so.
Other position requests currently in the fiscal year twenty-four first pass budget include the county manager's office has requested additional assistant county manager. HHS has requested three additional income maintenance caseworkers, two operations and security coordinators, and two environmental health specialists for food and lodging. Elections has requested candidate coordinator. General services has requested an electrician. Human resources have requested a human resources technician. IT has requested an IT technician. Library has requested six full-time library assistants to support their staffing model. Recreation services has requested an additional park ranger. Sustainability has requested a program manager. Tax assessment has requested three property appraisers. Fleet has requested a lead mechanic. Strategy and innovation has requested administrative coordinator. And these requests total two point three million dollars in the first pass budget. Fleet's request a lead mechanic.
I believe we added one position last year that is really focused on internal and how the county itself would meet that. This position is more external-facing and working with our community and how our community will start to meet our goals that we have laid out.
And I like the way you broke out the established priorities from our budget retreat. That's helpful. And I'm, I have to say, I'm curious to hear about the additional assistant county manager.
Absolutely. Currently, when, when you look at our organizational structure, the, the current assistant county managers have about ten departments reporting. And that span of control is starting to be beyond manageable. So the idea here would be that we would have a third assistant that we can actually have better span of control on the work that we do from a leadership perspective.
At this point, do you have a sense of kind of whether there'd be a focus for that person's portfolio? Or is that sort of in, in development?
In development.
Understood, got it.
Employee Health has requested a medical office assistant. And that is funded in our internal service and health insurance fund. Moving on to the cost of living adjustment. You'll bear with me, I'm going to read from the personnel ordinance. Each year, the commissioners may grant a salary increase based on cost of living adjustment, a COLA calculation to all employees occupying a regular position, and grant-funded position for which the funding source allows. During the budget planning process of each year, staff will present a COLA calculation to the board. The calculation is the two-year average annual change in the Consumer Price Index for urban wage earners and clerical workers, called the CPIW for short. And it's published by the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, measured as of the December data release next preceding the date of this presentation. So the board will grant a COLA adjustment through the budget ordinance. If the board elects to provide this annual COLA, it will be effective July first. And using this calculation, based on the two-year average change, the calculation has yielded a seven point two eight percent COLA increase. Any questions regarding that?
And that's ten million dollars?
Yes. You jumped ahead. So as we discuss the budget impact of these personnel drivers for the general fund, the additional position requests, both those attributed to grants and new position requests, represent five point nine million dollars. The state has also increased the required retirement match by the county for employees' participation in the state retirement system. And this increase equates to two point one million dollars. Applying the cost of living adjustment to existing positions is approximately nine point nine million dollars. As it stands in this first pass budget, the personnel cost increases are estimated at seventeen point nine million dollars. Are there any questions regarding personnel?
Just a quick point of clarification, on the chart that lists new position requests by position under category, I just want to clarify, does this chart capture all the county staff positions that were listed under the various grants? I think it does, but I just wanted to clarify.
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so it presupposes approval, I guess, or it presupposes that we wrap the, or this is what it looks like if we say yes to using funding.
That would be your total cost, but it does not pre-propose, it's really laying out everything for you.
Understood, yeah, I used the wrong word, excuse me. Would it be possible, just as we go into the next review, to add sort of a slash where it's also categorized under the category? So for instance, if a sheriff's position is grant, it'd be listed as a grant position, but it would also be public safety, just so we can be tracking where those priorities fall. Thank you very much.
And one thing I do want to mention here, missing from this conversation today is that living will wage. I have not proposed that we would move to the twenty dollars an hour this year. But that's an incremental, just economics did say you can take time to get there. So the only increase to staff on a whole would be the cost of living, which would put us right around nineteen dollars and. Nineteen eighty, so not quite to the twenty dollars, but we're not proposing to twenty dollars in this budget.
But could you show the math for what it would take to get there?
We can bring that to you next time.
I mean, because a big part of the, a big part of the change there is around cost of living, right? I mean, their formula is also based on cost of living. So I would assume that this, you know, nine point nine million of cost of living that we approved that, like, that probably takes us a long way towards it, would be my hunch, but it, I'd like to, I'd like to understand the math.
Yes, the cost of living today would get us from the seventeen dollars an hour to the nineteen eighty, not quite to the twenty dollars. Yes, not quite to the twenty dollars and ten cents.
Okay, let's just see what, see what it would.
We will bring that back to you.
It would take to be, to be there.
If there's no other personnel questions, we're now going to move to discussion of operating budget increases. This information is related to additional operating budget requests for public safety, totaling four point five million dollars more in operating than fiscal year twenty-three. Detention center sees an increase of two and a half million dollars for their medical contract, as well as increased costs related to food, safety equipment, and training need for staff. IT will have a six hundred thirty-nine thousand dollar budget impact related to body cams and tasers for the sheriff's office. Emergency services has requested more funding for its community paramedic program, replacement cardiac monitors, therapy services for staff, emergency operations plan update totaling five hundred sixteen thousand dollars. The sheriff's office has an additional four hundred six thousand dollars in requests for trainings, materials for community engagement, canine supplies, and safety equipment. The Public Safety Training Center has budgeted an increase of two hundred sixty-five thousand dollars for inspection and calibration for their methane monitoring system, annual physicals, tools, equipment, and building maintenance. Operating increases a hundred forty-nine thousand dollars for nine-one-one operations, largely stemming from increases in travel and training, as many of the current and future staff have or will have relatively low levels of experience and contracted services to help temporarily fill the staffing void. Justice Resource Support has eleven thousand dollars increases due to additional training and contract increases.
I'm just curious, the body cams and tasers, why did, why is that put under information technology rather than the sheriff's office?
Because there's a large level of, the, really what you're paying for after the initial cost is the licensing and the, there's the networking of ensuring that there's network capacity for the body cams and tasers. They record incidents and that, that's largely an IT-related function to, for the maintenance of, and tracking of those devices.
So is, to be direct on that one, we're thinking like server space for the gigabytes worth of video footage that we have to hang on to?
And network access and, and ensuring that it aligns with the security, security things we've put in place for the rest of our network.
In the detention center, uh, funding is over two point five million. That doesn't include funding or increased compensation for detention. That doesn't include funding or increased compensation for detention center staff?
No, this is operating dollars. So no, this is not salary and benefits here.
Could we have like more detailed breakout around, that's a pretty big number, so I'm just
Okay.
curious which parts of that are...
The majority of that is the inmate medical contract, but we can give you precisely what that portion is.
Is there some reason, I mean, is that, is that an atypical increase of, or just, just the increase on that? And
It is a rather large. Yes, we will bring back the actual details, but it is a rather large increase for that medical contract. And it's based, in the past, it was based on the number of inmates in the jail. The sheriff had negotiated a tiered approach, so if the numbers were low, that was low, but we have now exceeded our pre-COVID numbers. And that increase is going along with a growth in our population for the jail.
Within that, I'd welcome the opportunity to speak with the sheriff or his leadership team on what they're seeing at the level of health issues and priorities within the population that's detained. And particularly anything we can understand about sort of behavioral health issues in particular. And also life-threatening issues that are coming up. I think it intersects so much with work we're doing, whether it's around addressing homelessness, or addiction, opioid crises, or Justice Resource Center, or work with an EMS and just I would find it helpful the more, the more we can be connecting those dots within our budget conversations. I would find that very helpful.
Can I ask just another question? I might have missed it, but in the 516 for emergency services, is any of that portion of that for training of potential new people for that department, or is that going to be a separate request?
They're, they do have training covered in their budget, but this is, this is new and additional cost impacts.
Got a question on that same line item, if you're done, Martin. Therapy services listed, I assume that kind of thing is already budgeted and funded for other frontline departments like the sheriff's office?
Yes.
They already have that, but it just hasn't been in the past for
We have had it for some, to some degree for EMS, but we're funding it in a much larger capacity now because I think paramedics are seeing things that are impacting them a little more than they have in the past. And so it's definitely leveling up the funding to ensure that we have wraparound services so staff are able to get back out there and do the work.
On the detention center staffing and the 911 center staffing. So we did, we did the budget amendment last year for the detention center staffing because just recruitment and retention was a big challenge. What we're hearing is it's still a challenge, right? So is there something proposed around any further adjustments in that regard that we're going to get to? Or that is contemplated, I mean?
We are in discussions with the sheriff now. He has raised the conversation of having an additional 5 dollars for those detention officers. So we're working through that to add that to the budget. It's not yet as a placeholder, but we're in discussions with him, so that is coming forward.
Okay, and, and obviously at the most, one of the most recent meetings, we had the discussion on the 911 center and the additional pay for 911 center staff. But the hope is that that's sort of a, not a permanent situation, right? But that we get the staffing ratios back up. But are there any plans to recommend changes to the compensation for this position? You know, within 911 on a more long-term basis, so we don't, you know, use all the incentive pay to solve the issue, but then once it goes away, we find ourselves right back in the situation again?
Yes, one of the, I believe we called it long-term when we brought it to you last time, was to think through what does that base pay look like and make sure we're comparable to others? And they don't steal our people long-term. So we are, we're looking at our base pay, differential pay, and all the pays around our 911 staffing. That's something that we will bring forward once we are, hopefully in this budget. I don't want to bring it outside of the budget, I want to bring it into part of the budget. But we are working through what does that look like now?
We have two contracts related to homelessness in the budget request. These are existing contracts that have traditionally sat in Health and Human Services, but are now moving to other departments to align with their goals. Planning and Community Development will take on the Code Purple Contract, which is collaboration to provide emergency sheltering in extreme cold weather. Libraries will take on the Library-Based Homeless Outreach Contract with Homeward Bound.
Can you, can you share a little more detail about that? With the Code Purple Contract, the city has been administering that in the past and we have paid into it, is that correct?
Yes, and that's still happening, so this is our, our contribution.
Oh, okay, understood. So we would, okay.
In the past, it was on the Health and Human Services budget. And since we're going to have a homeless person in
Staff person anonymous to planning, but it's, this proposes a stable amount. Okay, and then the, and then we've been contracting out for this library-based homeless position and now we will, same thing?
It's a service, it's not necessarily a position, so Homeward Bound provides
Okay.
referrals and
Understood, and so it stays that way. Okay, great, thank you.
Planning and Community Development has made two budget requests related to infrastructure planning. There's a 300,000 dollar request to collaborate with the City of Asheville in contracting for a master transit plan. And additionally, there is 25,000 dollars requested for the French Broad River Metropolitan Planning Organization multimodal plan.
So there's been discussions about the transit master plan and the scope of what that plan would be or not be. So are those, I guess those are ongoing discussions, is that accurate to say?
That is accurate.
We've had some ideas about things that we would like to study in terms of potential, you know, ways that we can better coordinate or integrate operations inside and outside the city limits. The city has a bunch of additional things they're interested in looking at too. So we have some overlapping interests, but also perhaps some distinct ideas as well. So that's just going to be a conversation we need to continue to understand. Is there enough, is there enough alignment on what the study would be for it to make sense for us to undertake it at this time? I guess that's my, my thoughts, but I guess it's also a question in terms of where the staff are thinking about this as well.
Let us get back to you on that. I do think there is some alignment from what we are seeing today. And we met last week to talk a little bit about it some more. As we continue down the path of the scope, I will share it with you so you can make sure we're all aligned. There are some pieces that the city would have as alternates, so they can study those themselves versus the bigger conversation, mostly around maintenance facilities and where they should be located. For us, it's about operations and efficiencies and governance and frequency of the vehicles overall operating. Should you in the county, should you run this route, how would that route run? So we are talking through that, we do see some alignments, especially on the operating side of having this working together.
So other requests that are driving our operating dollars. One theme you will hear in our operating requests is contractor increases. The cost of doing business is increasing at a rate equal to or above inflation. The following increases represent additional 2 million dollars in operating expenditures. General Services will be tending deferred maintenance at our community centers, managing utility increases, and dealing with contract increases across the board. This adds 902,000 dollars to our fiscal year 24 operating budget. Animal Services has an increase of 606,000 dollars related to a contractor increase of 40% to operate the shelter. Human Resources will expand training and apprenticeship programming, increasing their budget by 290,000 dollars. Parking Services is seeking, is seeing a 170,000 dollar increase in contracted services for our parking facilities due to inflation and additional coverage at the Sears Alley parking structure.
Can you tell us a little more about the apprenticeship programming? I know we discussed that in December at our budget retreat, but is that in conjunction with helping some of the hiring challenges that we're
I'm going to call on Sharon to answer your question.
Yes, good afternoon. So the addition of the budget dollars, 150,000, would be to help funds set up and operate. Apprenticeship programs will be starting off with three distinct programs. We'll be working with Internship NC and starting off with a 911 paramedic program. Then also with the, I'm sorry, a paramedic program and then 911 telecommunicator program. And the third is environmental health. It's a position that we're having a significant problem trying to find folks. And those will be your inspectors, wastewater, restaurants.
Great, thanks.
You're very welcome.
I appreciate knowing that it is being designed to help with some of the hiring challenges we're having. Thanks.
It's hoping to be a portal to help this next generation want to work in government.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Another large driver of operating expenses for fiscal year 24 is additional requests related to the recommendations from the Ad Hoc Reappraisal Committee. There are multiple strategies to include community engagement, mailings, advertising, procurement of data, new software, and evaluation of neighborhood boundaries. This was brought to you in a full presentation in December. We have established a vehicle evaluation team this year to assess vehicle requests made by departments, make recommendations based on policy and need. The team has recommended five ambulances, two of which are rebuilds, an SUV for community paramedicine, replacement for two trucks for environmental health onsite, three trucks for the General Services Department, two replacement trucks for permits and inspections, a new truck for planning, and 16 SUVs for the sheriff's office. These requests total 2.4 million dollars. Moving now to education. In fiscal year 18, the board agreed to consider the unrestricted revenue growth rate as the factor in estimating the amount of local current expense to appropriate annually for our school systems. This purple line represents the unrestricted revenue growth rate year over year. And if the board had decided to match that, what the annual allocation would have been from fiscal year 2019 to fiscal year 2024. This line shows the trajectory of that growth rate. However, when you look at the actual growth of the allocation for local current expense, you can see that the board has provided funding that exceeds that revenue growth rate each year. For fiscal year 2024, the unrestricted revenue growth rate is projected 3.35%. Currently, we have a placeholder in the budget to fully fund the second year of Buncombe County Schools salary study. This would result in a 10.3% increase. While the state budget is not yet passed, the governor's budget recommends an 18% increase in teacher salaries over the next two years and restoration of pay for master's degrees. So to reiterate, we have a placeholder in this first pass budget for schools that would increase their allocation by 10%. We also have a placeholder of a 5% increase for AB Tech. These amounts demonstrate an increase of 10.4 million dollars, with education continuing to represent 27% of the general fund budget.
Got a question, probably too early to ask. I assume, we all know soon enough, but I assume this, one of our school districts, if not both, is taking a guess at what the state budget will actually include for teacher salary increases. I'm wondering if anyone in the room knows what that budget guess is?
So we do have meetings scheduled with the schools. They'll come meet with us in about a month, the end of April, and, and provide us their first, their request for the next year. That's the first time we'll lay eyes on, on it. We have been in conversations with, with them. They move at a little slower pace in building their budget than we do.
Okay.
And they are, as you said, they're, they're relying on the state budget. They do have to do some guesswork in terms of like what that looks like. Last year, they thought they would be getting a 2% increase and the state gave them a 3% increase, so.
We'll see them at our April 25th, 24th meeting?
We'll see them at the May 9th meeting.
May 9th meeting, okay.
Yes. No, this is, this is simply to fully fund the salary study that they asked for last year. There's no additional, there's no additional funding here other than that. Any other questions about education? As we move to our standing commissioner priorities, you see our contributions to affordable housing, conservation easements, early childhood education, economic development, education's special projects, and strategic partnerships. Also, you see here the homeowner grant program and the septic repair program. Community reparations are funded at 500,000 dollars with the agreed upon 2% escalator. Bob Haynes will provide a brief update on septic repair, and then Philip Pardon will provide a homeowner grant update. New funding initiatives brought to us include the allocation for McCormick Field, discussed at your last board meeting, and funding for Clean Water Fund and watershed management. Is there anything else you would like to discuss here? If not, I will I will introduce Bob Haynes to talk about the septic repair.
So now, okay. The septic repair program, I thought it was pretty good success for the first time that we've done it. We sent out 250 mailings, we only had 16 applications come back. We extended the deadline by two and a half months to give people more of a chance to get into it. The costs were a lot more than what we had anticipated. Some of them even went over 30,000 dollars for a septic repair. So, but all in all, we were able to qualify 10 of those for the septic repair program out of the 16 applications. And were able to come up with a little bit more money to fund all of that. So next year, I would ask for a little bit more than the 75,000 cents. Those costs are way up there, so, but overall, it was very good. It was well-nated for the community.
Thanks for that update. So you were able to help 10 homeowners?
Yes, 10.
Okay.
So for some of the ones that ended up being bigger ticket repairs, were those not included because those were just, you know, going to cost so much more? You focused on the ones that?
No, we went all the way through it, first come, first served, went through them all. If whoever was qualified, they went in this stack. And that's why we exceeded the 75,000, because we funded all of those.
So some of them were pretty expensive projects, others were a lot less expensive? So you were able to get 10 of them done?
Yes, you know, the estimates was the high end, 30,000 on some of them. The, three estimates were required for each one. Then they ranged from 12 to 30,000 dollars on one estimate, the range. So, yeah, I can tell you who not to use if you want a septic repair. But, yeah, they were pretty expensive and they were that way through all, all of them. But average price around all of those is probably around 9,000 dollars, I would say.
You got three bids on each?
Yes.
And so then the lowest cost responsive bid would be selected?
Yes. That I do not, I do, I don't know.
Failing in a particular part of the county versus just a scattered?
I don't know.
And so how much, I'm curious, how much more did you need to be able to meet?
Well, we have the 75, we needed right at 10,000 extra.
Okay.
So 97,000.
You're asking for more this fiscal year or you said the next fiscal year?
I think it should be because I think it should be because it's really not, this was just kind of like, here, do this.
See what, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah. So, I just think if we had a little bit more money, you know, in there to, we could help more people because I think word is going to get out more. And, you know, for people to realize, hey, I can't get assistance, so.
And so, so these were mailings that were sent to people who have a septic repair permit application in?
Correct, correct.
So, we know they're interested in doing something?
Yes.
Or maybe even actively planning to do something?
Yes, and only sixteen applications from that two fifty, so.
Did we get any, were some of the folks who ended up doing projects identified through something other than the mailings? Or were the mailings the ones that drove all the actual projects?
I don't know the number between the mailings and advertising and word of mouth. And, because we were, even on one of the local Hispanic channels, we did an interview and they got the word out of that community, so.
I mean, so part of the reason I ask would be, I mean, if people have applied for a septic permit repair, I mean, I wonder, and we'll probably never know, but just question would be, how many people would have done it anyway? Like, how many, how many additional repairs happened that wouldn't have happened otherwise? Probably no way of knowing that, right?
Probably not, no.
No, we had, we did the mail, the advertising first and the campaign first to get folks. Then we did the mailings as well to drum up more business in this area. So, but we cannot tell you who told, no, we didn't ask the question, I guess. We'll have to do that differently this year. How did you hear about the program? Was it the mailing or was it the ads? Then we could tell you the answer to that.
Okay, but, I'm sorry, I may misheard. But, Bob, did you say all the people who did, who did a project had actually already applied for a permit?
Yes, all the ones that applied for the grant, we'll say, did have a active failing system.
An active failing system?
Yes. They had applied for a repair permit.
Okay.
But, yes.
They had already applied for a repair permit indicating they knew they had a failing system and they knew they needed to do something about it. I guess, maybe another way of thinking about it, how many people apply for a repair permit and then don't do it?
Uh, well, out of the two hundred and fifty, that's how many active repair permit applications are on file. So, take out the ten, there's two hundred and forty active cases out there that still have a failing system.
And some of those people haven't, aren't doing the repairs, like only the people who got the funding are doing the repairs? I guess I'm?
No, some, no, you know, if someone can afford it, they'll go ahead and do it.
Yeah.
But, those that can't afford it, you know, with the threshold being at this, you might make fifty dollars too much to be qualified for this program. But you still can't afford to repair your septic program or your septic system. So, yes, there's still going to be?
Still has your information on file?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, what?
I guess, because I'm?
Go ahead.
Because I'm confused about why someone would apply for a permit if they weren't intending to do it.
Well, I think when environmental health gets a complaint, they'll go out and they'll tell them, hey, you need to get this system permitted. You have a complaint going, you need to do something here. So, the person, instead of getting a notice of violation, they will repair, or you know, apply for that septic repair permit. That stops the notices of violation because they've applied for the permit. That don't necessarily mean they're going to do anything, they have applied for that.
That's helpful.
Okay.
That's helpful, that's what I was looking for.
If I get the permit, I don't have to do it.
It buys you time. Yeah, it buys you time, so.
And Bob, do we have a sense then, and maybe you were getting at this and I just missed it, but do we have a sense then of how many people that apply for the permits just aren't able to do it because of the cost of the?
Well, according to all the people that applied, all sixteen of them said they couldn't do it.
And beyond, but beyond that, you think it's just those sixteen out of all those people that couldn't afford?
No, I, I would hate to guess at the number of the ones that actually could not afford it, you know, so. I mean, you know, like I said, average cost, nine thousand dollars, that's a lot of money to come up with, you know, for some people, so.
All right, great update, thanks, Bob.
Next, we have Philip Hardin with us to talk about the homeowner grant.
Good afternoon. I'll start by saying, probably want to give kudos to, to, to the commissioners for the tweaks that I think we made with the homeowner grant program last year. I think they made a huge difference in running the program this year. And I also really truly do believe that we served what this program was intended to serve this past year. And also, our county IT, they did a great job putting out a new platform for applying for homeowner grant. It ripped real, real smooth this year. And most people, most, all the applications we took this year online and came through that screening process that IT set up. So, we ended up taking eleven hundred inquiries or applications this past year. And if you remember, the year before, we took right at two thousand. We approved seven hundred and twenty five of those and denied three hundred and seventy five of them. And our spending this past year, the bottom line, if you look at the total county portion at the bottom, I think we spent about three hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars, county dollars, last year. This year was two hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred. And the program total for the Woodfin and Asheville was two hundred and seventy five thousand. Last year was four seventy eight, I believe. And inquiries by demographics, by race, seven percent black or African American, sixty six percent white, less than one percent Hispanic. And then, did, preferred not to report, twenty six percent. So, it's really hard to, to take the data and, and live on when you have almost a third of the people who did not report. Because remember, it's not a requirement to report your race when you apply. And almost a third of the people did not want to report. I'm not asking for any changes in the program coming year. Like I said, we think it went very well this year.
So, the county, the total county investment in the program was two hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred this year?
That's correct.
What was it the year before?
It was about three hundred and seventy eight thousand.
Three hundred and seventy eight thousand?
Mm-hmm.
What do you attribute this significant reduction to?
I think the reserve requirement had something to do with it. I, I can't tell you because?
That's so.
When people went through that screening tool online, it asked the question, do you have liquid reserves of more than sixty thousand dollars? And if they said yes to that question, they were screened out.
All right, any questions on this item? I'll just say, I appreciate the update. I'm still glad we're working in this space. I think we're still kind of, we're figuring it out, you know, how to make, I think it sounds like there's been positive. Some of the changes to make it more, the interface more efficient, user friendly, I think that's all, that's all really good. For me, I'd continue to be open to looking at ways to make it a little bit more expansive, right? I mean, I think that, anyway, I would, I would speak in favor of being open to that. So, we could just provide more benefits. If we're going to have a program, I'd kind of like to see it do more good because we put a lot of work into it. So, like, let's try to get more benefit out of it if we're going to do it, let's do it in a way that's more meaningful. So, thoughts or questions? We don't have to figure all the, I mean, we're covering a lot of territory today, but we could, you know, we could take a deeper dive on this as we have kind of each year since we've been working on it if we want to.
Well, commissioners, last year, I'm sorry. Last year, we, we did not address any structural changes to this until the budget adoption night. So, if there's any changes you guys want to make, it would be great to have that before actual adoption night. So, I'm just putting that out there. But we do have four sixty five as a placeholder in the budget, if you go back, can you go back to the priority screens? We do have four seventy five as a placeholder for this item, but we only have the seventy five for the septic program. And Bob is saying he needs a little bit more for that program. So, if you wanted to switch some monies from the homeowner grant to that, that's a possibility as well.
Now, one hundred and sixty five of that is, is revenue from Asheville and Woodfin. So, our county contribution is three hundred thousand dollars.
But, so if we, but is that an estimated amount? Like, if we say it's estimated at three hundred, but then, let's say, more people apply, then it would end up being more than three hundred, or do we cut it off?
We?
There's more of just an estimate?
We funded the overage last year.
We came to you guys and did a budget amendment last year and you gave us more, that's to make sure that we didn't have to cut anyone off. This year with the septic program, we just, Bob was lucky, in his department, we had a contract that came in less. So, he was operating to make sure every single person, the ten, was funded. Normally, we will come back and tell you if we didn't have that opportunity, this will come back and say, we have ten, here's the overage, do you want to fund it or not? So, there's an opportunity for that.
I just had a question. As we go back to page, I think it's slide thirty. As we, as we launch this, this expanded effort around the ad hoc appraisal committee recommendations, building out this campaign around educating folks around options around, in part at least, as I've understood it, it's about trying to reach people who are being disproportionately impacted by reappraisal and who might be struggling with paying the assessed property tax, which is a similar population who are trying to reach the homeowner grant program. Is that accurate? I just, I wonder if there's been an opportunity yet to think about sort of how some of the effort that's being made to reach people through, around the reappraisal recommendations might also just be an outreach vehicle for the homeowner grants and whether that can be sort of bundled in as, as another resource people are made available of?
And we do include the homeowner grant opportunity in our bills when we send our tax bills out. So, every single homeowner is getting that as well.
Right, and this, I understand this to be, this is sort of this additional layer of outreach that will be happening to folks. Okay, great, okay. I had a couple other kind of random questions before we conclude the operating discussion, if this isn't okay? What, I honestly wasn't sure sort of the best place to, to put this potential placeholder in the discussion, but just did want to flag a conversation we've had a few times at the commission level around the recommendations that'll be coming forward around low barrier shelter. And the timeline that has been discussed with the shelter working group was that we, that we are striving to have recommendations ready sort of in the, in the May timeline. And as we move forward in budget discussions, we just wanted to kind of create some placeholder space for us to receive those recommendations when they're ready and integrate them into discussions. Again, I don't know whether we would label that under commissioner priorities or where exactly it would land in this discussion, but that seemed like the best fit I could find at this point. And I'll keep you all posted as, as that working group is kind of starting to craft specific recommendations around whether that timeline is shifting at all. But I, but we're currently aiming for May. And that would include in all, I mean, that would include a request for county funding along with the city as a funding partner. And however, and I'm sure lots of discussion both here and at the city level about what that looks like.
Question I have on page fifteen, where we, the ad hoc reappraisal recommendation, what do they mean by reevaluate neighborhood boundaries?
So, so currently, the way the appraisal department works, the county is broken down into neighborhoods, not specifically Shiloh or East End, but boundaries of the neighborhood. And what we want to do is to take a look to see if they're really contiguous, does it really work in those neighborhoods? They've been established since the county's been doing reappraisal work. We have not gone back and do a full reevaluation of those boundaries. So, that's what we want to go back and take a look and make sure that we are looking at like-minded or like-type housing in a Pacific boundary.
Just when I see neighborhoods like that, I have flashbacks to red line.
No, and that is just the way we named locations in our counties, a neighborhood. It could be a revaluation territory, it could be anything, it's just a naming convention.
So, Jasmine, the, one of the points being made there is that there could be a recommendation for emergency shelter that comes out before we approve the budget, but pretty late in our budget process, right? So, kind of just flagging, that could be challenging from a budget planning standpoint because it might be a big number. We don't know, but it'll happen kind of later in our process. So, I don't know, Avril, do you have any thoughts on like how we sort of anticipate that? Do we need to just sort of be aware, there could be this number that comes out, it'll be late in our process, so could be a, it's something we are all really supportive of doing this planning workaround, but it could be from just a planning standpoint, a little bit of a curve ball, just kind of late in the, this cycle, right?
I wanted to say?
So, just be aware it's coming, right? Yeah.
We still have a small portion of ARPA dollars that we have held back to date. So, that's one place that we can look to fund if it is for capital. I'm not sure if you're thinking it will be capital or operating for that?
I don't think I can speak to that yet because there will be both capital and operating funding.
And if it will be operating, we will look to see, we could put a placeholder in our budget. And as we get closer to funding and balancing the budget, the conversation that I would love to have with the board is what do you see us cutting from operations now to, to fund some of these other things? But that decision needs, that discussion needs to have as well.
You know, part of, we were talking in the Affordable Housing Committee meeting today, there was a proposal we got from Homeward Bound around like a coordinated entry position to fund that, to fund like a full-time additional coordinated entry position. And we were sort of like talking about, like, is our committee the right place to look at this? Because, I mean, we're doing with, dealing with affordable housing and homelessness, but, I don't know, I mean, there's just, but there's a set of different things related to homelessness solutions that I think we want to be, whatever we do, we want it to be the highest priority, most impactful thing. So, I mean, in a way, I guess, and I'm just thinking aloud here, but if, if we almost sort of need to be, we've already committed to the position, the one position, but if we want to just be sort of thinking about, you know, we're open to investing in additional homelessness solution initiatives in the community in this budget cycle, we want to hear from Shelter Work Group, we want to hear from, you know, I'd like, I'd like, I'd love for the, for the collaboration of groups that are working with this to come in and say, if the county has additional resources, here's the number one thing, number two thing, number three thing, instead of kind of like little different committees and stuff hearing different pieces of it, but not necessarily making sure we're investing in the highest impact opportunities.
My, my expectation with that HyAC or continuum of care would be the one making that recommendation back to the board, not Homeward Bound or other small nonprofits, but it would come as a holistic conversation around how do we move forward on the recommendations that came out of the, the national alliances.
That's a great flag because maybe we need to steer a shepherd that somewhat if we are starting to see proposals come into different committees that are in fact for some of the very strategies that we're supporting or are considering supporting. Just since we're on the topic, in terms of thinking of funding commitments we've already made that are aligned with those recommendations, you all recall that we funded a two-year pilot of a mobile outreach program that's run by EMS and the community paramedic program that was launched this fall. A major focus of that is getting these mobile services, whether it's wound care or mental, mobile mental health crisis services to unhoused folks. So, that's one, that was a recommendation within the NAEH recommendations as well that we already have underway and have already committed funding to as a two-year pilot. So, again, as we're grouping all these together, that, that's one that's in motion already. And that would be very helpful. If this is a, maybe this is something for future conversation, but I'd love to hear from the affordable housing folks, whether you all contemplate or envision any affordable housing dollars being used towards shelter, whether from the bond or from the, the two point three that's allocated here, or whether it really feels like those stay focused on the creation of new housing. Again, that can be a later, a later conversation if the timing is better later. Again, that can be a later, a later conversation if the timing is better later.
Literally just talking about this question. So, so Matt, and Matt said that, you know, he would want to check with legal and stuff to you to kind of verify all this, but the short version was, we were getting kind of aware that this, there could be a request from the emergency shelter working group and HIAAC around an emergency shelter facility, could have capital dollars. I think the initial feedback we've gotten is that like bond funds can't be used for like a congregate homeless shelter type facility. It needs to be, but like, it needs to be for construction of new housing, right? Like so, but distinct from being a homeless shelter. So like a days-in type project that does provide new permanent housing, like a project like that could qualify for affordable housing concert, I mean, bond funds, but an emergency shelter as a standalone probably wouldn't. So anyway, those are just a few broad guidelines we've heard so far. I mean, obviously, most of our funds are kind of focused on production of new affordable housing, which could be for people like exiting homelessness or for just regular, you know, kind of working families and others.
So to a point you made earlier, if it's general fund, it could be used for anything. So the affordable housing, general fund dollars could go to that.
Right. Affordable housing services program funds could go to a shelter project because that's just our general fund allocation, that's right.
Right. And then you flagged that if it ends up being capital, ARPA dollars could also be used.
Right.
Anything else on the operating before we move forward? So we're going to move to IT and capital funding. Eric Row is here to discuss IT projects, and Mason Scott will then walk us through funding of fiscal year twenty-four capital projects.
Hello, commissioners. This is everyone today. So just as a background, these are either new or transformative projects for IT. We have lots of other IT projects, of course, that come throughout the year, and other funding requests, for example, like new security cameras, that's very classic our operating. So these, I want you to think about that these are kind of new to the county, new programs, new capabilities. So the first one you see on the board is for a board and agenda management solution. This stream is line, streamlines, agenda management, approvals, minutes, board applications, and other processes related to your board, but I think the long-term goal is to get all the boards in a unified process and a way of doing things, and for our citizens to have a consistent look and feel of all the agendas and minutes and for all of our boards. The next project is a kind of a, an assessment, it's really part one of a multi-year project. Our public website is an older set of technology, we have a great web team, and we like the look and feel of our site, but it's hard to maintain. It's highly developer and customized, and Avril shaking her head over there. So this, this twenty-five year, twenty-five thousand dollar cost, we look towards assessing technologies, vendors, our content, and what would need to be migrated, and some support needs for that future fiscal year project of replacing our entire public-facing website. The next one on is EMS real-time tracking, a very exciting project. This is a system that provides real-time monitoring of EMS calls and where our EMS ambulances are, and does some predictive analytics to reposition EMS, the fleet, in real time to respond to either historical demands or current demands. Yeah, it's all about response times for that one. The next project here is this grant management software, lots of conversations on grants today, and this is a kind of A to Z grant lifecycle management for grants that we receive. It also has opportunities to say, look for new funding through this software, but it's compliance tracking, it's milestone tracking, and other features related to just A to Z grant lifecycle management. The next one is IT project management tools. This is an extension of our project management capabilities. It includes resource capacity management, governance, automation, and other efficiencies related to project management for IT projects. Next one is a risk management software. It's a case management system for claims and risk management. It uses risk data and insurance data and to prevent losses, control claim costs, inform decision, and improve renewals to overall reduce the total cost of risk for the county. Next one is Web E O C. This is a tool that we've actually been using with the state, the state's version of it for a long, long time, and this is in our own environment. This is an incident management tool, and basically provides real-time situational awareness and coordination of emergencies, resource staffing, all those kinds of capacities, and it will integrate with the state's Web E O C system for better reporting across jurisdiction response as well as reimbursement opportunities. And then the last one is well and septic digitization. Currently, we have a very manual process for our field inspectors, and they come back to the office and hand draw maps. This will use some hardware, some GPS services, some software, and they'll start drawing their well and septic map lines out in the field for better accurate data. Is there any questions on those projects?
Just one question on the, the strategic partnerships grant management. I know the internal audit committee, I think the, it's looking at grant management.
That's, that's happening right now, I believe.
Okay. And so I just wanted to, and you've probably already thought of this, but so this, there may be some recommendations that come out of that, so.
Correct.
Are you waiting kind of until you.
And I don't, I don't, I don't want to, you know, say what Dan's going to, you know, come across in this, but I think a lot of things around this are compliance tracking, milestone tracking, financial tracking. We have a disparate way that we're doing that right now, spreadsheets and different stakeholders. You know, that group in particular, Commissioner Wells, they've, we've got a position, that grant manager position, they've got a policy, we, I like to talk about the iceberg a lot in IT. Everyone focuses on the technology, that's the ten percent, but the ninety percent beneath the water is process and value and policy and cultures and, and that, I would say the grant team has done a, we picked this project because they've done so much of that work beneath the iceberg, and they're ready for technology.
Okay, thank you.
And every single one of these that we recommended this year is about foundation building. There's a lot that we need to be working on, and this starts that iceberg, to Eric's point. So there's nothing on here that is not truly needed because Eric mentioned it for the last one, we do a lot of manual processing, almost everything on here is replacing a whole lot of manual processing that we do.
And I assume that that then allows staff to be more effective and efficient with the other time that they have. It feels like maintaining spreadsheets for grants and.
I think that's the hope, is you let the software manage the low-level work of, you know, notifications and tracking, you focus on problem solving.
Yes. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Eric. I'm going to invite up Mason Scott, our interim finance director.
Good afternoon. I think that you all have seen this list of capital projects in the last pass, so I won't speak to justifications behind requests necessarily.
And there, there is an updated draft of the five-year plan in your packet.
So I did want to point out some of kind of unassigned but implied informal grouping of these projects before we move forward in the discussion. So starting at the top of our list, we have this fire station alerting paging project that is, it sounds like equipment to us. The next two items there are major construction renovation type activities, so thirty-five Woodfin and the county courthouse. Then there is a design project in the middle of the slide. The remainder of the projects there are improvement, except for a couple towards the bottom, detention center and comprehensive facility assessment projects, and those tend towards maintenance and repair activities. So moving to the next slide, when we talk about, I think where finance plays a role and how we kind of organize and pay for these things, you'll notice that the two maintenance and repairs, so the facility assessment-driven projects fall off of that list, and you're left with that same kind of grouping of design, equipment, improvements, and major renovation and related activities. So wanted to slow down a little bit today and talk about decision-making and how we fund these projects. So you'll see two bottom-line numbers there, the fifty-eight point seven is effectively true project cost and what we're going to call the Pago number. And then this slide identifies a rough estimate projection at if we were to debt finance everything on the screen here. So obviously, that's a big number. I understand that there was some discussion in the last work session as to how we go about kind of deciding and finalizing those things, so I don't want to read our debt policy to you, but I figured we would slow down and have a conversation so you all have an opportunity. So wanted to start from the very beginning. So obviously, Pago is the option where we pay for projects with cash upfront. These are generally not going to be large expenditures, or they might have a useful life that's less than a loan term, so I want to call out that, that loan term piece, because when we talk about debt financing, we are going to a public market. So there are negotiations and stakeholders and market makers on the other side of those conversations. Considerations for Pago include availability of funds, so do we have the money now, timing of the projects, how important to us that we get it done, and what schedule we have for, to match the money available, and the opportunity or the need for interest savings to be used on other projects. So probably the most obvious and a prominent advantage of Pago is not tying up future funds and debt payments and having savings and interest. So we'll say here that this gives us the most long-term flexibility, it's effectively a cash transaction, we have the most control. So we know what we paid, when we paid it, how we paid it, but there are obviously benefits to the other options. So most of the rest of this conversation is about the debt financing piece and making that decision, but Pago obviously is the other side of that coin. So debt financing is governed in North Carolina by general statutes, the local government commission, federal law, and our own debt policy. I think we are fortunate in a lot of ways in North Carolina that we do have all of those guidelines of this as a financing resource. Considerations for debt financing include quicker delivery of projects in many cases, spread of cost over useful life of the capital asset, so are the people who are using that asset paying for it over the life of its use, increasing the current capacity for more projects, so we can do more with our cash now, but we have to understand the balance of flexibility with availability of those funds for future capacity. And then the interest rate environment is going to be a major determiner of, of what we do and how we issue debt. Again, we're going to market. So I said that I don't want to read the policy, the debt policy that we have, but I am going to say a lot of words from it, because that's our starting point when we consider decision-making on, on how to finance these projects. So the county's debt policy reflects best practices for governmental financial management, so we're talking to people across the nation on a regular basis, that's how we built that policy. It also reflects North Carolina general statutes, which includes the required review via our local government commission, and it also reflects federal law specifically in the area of tax code, so we benefit from tax-exempt debt financing most of the time. And so that's why there's so many words in that policy, right? It does cover a lot of what we do and how we do it. The objectives of the debt policy are that we only finance when necessary, we are as efficient as possible in determining the timing and the type of that debt, again, speaking to the market conditions. We obtain the most favorable interest rate and related costs for debt issuance, and we protect the county's credit rating. So I did want to note here, kind of a mini celebration, we are still rated triple A by S and P and Moody's, which is the highest rating for both. We've, we've been comfortable in that rating for quite some time, but did want to note here that similarly to a personal debt application, our credit is reviewed, rechecked, reevaluated every time we apply for debt. So there is a potential, not required, but potential impact. So thinking through kind of some of our questions and logic exercises when we do consider whether it's appropriate to debt finance certain projects, there are several considerations called out in the debt policy, I do want to highlight just a few of them before we move on. So do the project characteristics support the use of debt? The county may issue, is allowed to issue by law for the purpose of acquiring or constructing capital assets, including land, buildings, machinery, equipment, furniture, and fixtures. So that's where I kind of call out what was left on that lights, that last slide and what comes to this one is equipment, land, building, major capital improvements and renovation, et cetera, that's appropriate, and we are legally allowed to undergo those things. Where we can call things operating costs or maintenance-type activities, it's not appropriate for us to issue debt, so we leave those behind and consider those a Pago activity.
Fleets are, fleets are allowed, right? So you said fleets?
They are, vehicles are considered capital equipment, but I want to come back to that point in one of my next items. So next up, we consider the minimum useful life of the assets that we're, we're funding or acquiring. Long-term debt will be issued to purchase or construct capital improvements or equipment with a minimum expected life of five years. This is what the policy says, we do have some flexibility, but this is in line with best, best practice, and the example that I had here is with respect to vehicles, we rarely finance them because in the experience of the county, those lives are only three to four years. It's a little more hard to predict, and so all of these things pass through to our annual financial reporting and is whatever, what is ultimately our reporting to our stakeholders and our investors. And so they like to see that consistency. But vehicles, yes, are, are something that would be eligible under the capital-type asset evaluation criteria. And next up.
Sorry, I wanted to ask another question about the definition of capital improvements. Obviously, publicly-owned, county-owned infrastructure counts, but what about infrastructure that the county purchases or improves upon for individual homeowners or nonprofits or that kind of thing? I'm thinking of like the septic repair program as an example.
So the answer, I think, is it depends. Generally, no. So kind of our guiding principle is it has to be for public use, so it can't be capital funding for just a specific home.
And in addition to that, we need to be able to have collateral on some of what we borrow, so if we don't own that home that we're doing a septic repair for.
Right, right, right. Okay. Got it. So next major point I had here was long-term debt will not be amortized for a period beyond the life of the asset it is financing. So big words we all understand, but that impacts how we set up the loan terms. So for example, we have a schedule of useful lives that we use and present in our financial statements every year, buildings are, say, thirty years, equipment is ten years, and so when we go out to the market, those are the, the terms of the debt that a buyer would be willing to, to engage in a contract with us for. So kind, those are kind of the limits, and those also impact the rates, right, in the specific financing agreements. This also can impact how we bundle certain projects together, so the list you see on the screen now, there are some of these pieces where we might go to market and a buyer would say, we're willing to buy a bundle of the, the land or the building improvements with you, but you'll have to leave off the, the equipment and the design-type items because they don't seem to have the same useful life to us, and so we would offer you different rates on those things. Other considerations, I know I've mentioned this a few times, but market participation. So every time we step into the bond market, we're kind of going into the unknown at some point. We do have financial advisors who specialize, we have legal counsel, we have a great support system, but depending on the time, the day, the year, who knows what, what kind of rates we'll get. The timing of the debt issuance, so I think John has mentioned this previously, but there's always going to be a lag between the project activity and then us actually going to debt, which again, impacts the rates that we'll see. The local government commission likes to see permits and finalized quotes in hand before we move forward, so they know we have confidence in those numbers, and so the time to get those things done between your initial authorization of the project and then securing of the financing, a lot of things could change in the market. And then resources adequate to cover debt service. So this speaks to the earlier point about maintaining flexibility and control. Once we issue debt, we are locked into those payments for the life of the loan. There are very limited options to restructure or refinance debt. We very often cannot pay off early without some pretty complicated refunding structures. So that was the spiel of, this is kind of, it's a very complicated conversation, but we try to consider it carefully on a case-by-case basis. So are there any other points of discussion?
Thank you, that was helpful, and I, I do have a question. Looking at the paving and the new storage facility design, I'd be interested in hearing why you'd be, you're considering going out to debt on those rather than the Pago.
So in terms of the design, we would eventually bundle that with the construction of the storage facility, so that we would go to debt out on the package of the design and construction of the entire facility. So you're seeing the budget for the design costs, that's not the budget for the construction yet. And so what will happen essentially is that any twenty-four projects that we assign for debt this year will not go, will likely not go out for debt in fiscal year twenty-four. What, what you'll see in debt payments for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four are several projects that we established this year that may now be inspections done. projects that we established this year that may now be inspections done, bids in hand, and then we can then go out for debt. So, that's the reason that the design would be considered for debt, because it would be then packaged the following year with the construction.
I guess my question is more, so like with the paving and the design, those are things, right? If we go to debt, those are going to cost quite a bit more than what it would be as pay-go on those, and I guess just with my, I mean, everything Mason shared was very helpful, but I still do just have a question around those two items. Like, I get it, right, on whenever you're doing the renovations, the repairs, all of that makes sense to me, but paving, I just...
And it's also a matter of how much funding do we want to tran, how much funding do we have available in the capital fund, as well as like if we exhaust what funds are left in the capital fund, then we need to pay go those dollars out of the general fund and budget those additional dollars. So, it's really thinking in terms of like how best we manage those dollars. So, we're open to, we're open to that. If we, if we do pay go the paving, well, there will be three million dollars that we'll likely need to pay go from out of the general fund to the capital.
And more specifically to why paving? Part of Mason's conversation is how we bundle things together, so this paving could be actually bundled with something else. We have a county-wide paving program right now, so that could be bundled with that. It would make sense to add it to something that says already being borrowed. So, that's how we will look at the paving.
And I'll add another point, it's we are, we are hedging to some degree, so I think paving, specifically asphalt concrete, is one of those more volatile markets, and so, I think the game we're kind of playing is how much value can we get out of, out of current and future dollars, and that's where we pay some people the money to do math like that for us.
And so, sort of on the other end of like the opportunities, the, you know, I think part of the reason I wanted to talk about it was, you know, we are, we are still in this like unusual economic environment, right? Like, we have very high inflation, which is affecting the cost of construction, it's affecting wages and cost of living. So, in terms of, I mean, just the cost of living adjustment number alone, right? This isn't to give anyone a raise, like to just keep our public employees where they already have been, ten million dollars, right? Like, so that's just one number. This is before, you know, we've talked some about education, but this is, this is before the public schools have come in and explained how they are going to look at this, right? So, we're going to be under, we're going to be facing some really heavy lifts to deal with, you know, a pretty unique economic environment that we're in, to do what we're going to want to do to support our public employees, our public education systems, and a lot of these infrastructure projects that we're going to want to do, right? So, part of the reason I ask about the options around pay-go versus debt, I mean, I'd love to pay go everything, right? I mean, interest rates are a little bit higher, I mean, it'd be great to just pay stuff off, but it is, it is one of the more, for these different obligations that we have, it is one of the most impactful ways where if you pay for something all at once versus spreading it out over time, it has a big impact on, on how much money you have over the next couple of years, right? So, I think the next couple of years are going to be probably a lot like what we're seeing right now, right? Where cost of living's gone up a lot, that's going to continue. Hopefully, inflation settles down and gets a little bit more normal in the years to come, but I think these pressures that we're under are not going to be resolved right away. And another factor to think about is that in two, I think it's twenty-twenty-seven, right? The sales tax revenue associated with the AB tech capital funds, that legislation sunsets, right? So, that's kind of a key date, it's three or four years away, so it's not going to change anything for us this year or next year, but when that legislation sunsets and those obligations are completed, that will be a big financial change for Buncombe County, because those will now become sort of unobligated funds, and there'll be important decisions made by this board around how to invest that entire new, what will be from county revenue standpoint, a new sales tax revenue that will be coming into the Buncombe County to help, you know, pay for various priorities, right? And capital funds will continue to be, I'm sure, an important part of that, right? Because that won't go away, but the legislatively obligated use of those funds will go away. So, part of, part of the reason I elevate the question is, what are we going to do over the next several years to invest in these key priorities that we're going to be facing, while also, I think, wanting to do whatever we can not to raise property taxes, which would only contribute to this cost-of-living burden that all of our constituents are feeling, right? Which all this inflationary pressure, all this, this would only make that worse. So, that's going to be a tool that we're not going to want to use or to use minimally, right? So, those are the reasons I raised the question, you know, if for, everything you said, I think Mason makes great sense, makes, sounds like good policy, but if there are some ways to spread some of these important capital investments over time, it is a, it is one of the more impactful levers to potentially look at how we can do things while not going below our fund balance requirements over the next several years. So, that's, that's the reason I raised the question.
And we typically try to debt-finance as much as we can. To this point here, fifty-eight million dollars in operations, but only six-point-six would impact your budget this year if you're looking at the debt service on these items. We did not include, your question earlier, the fleet vehicles, basically because the lifespan of that is not more than five years. But we could, and I talked to Mason about this briefly, we could look to change our debt policy, but it says the five years and above, like for life, these would be shorter life.
So, vehicles have a more than three- or four-year life, it's just that we typically don't retain ownership for longer than that because we like to keep newer vehicles. Is that a characterization?
Not necessarily, but we also, we also see accidents. We are self-insured, so if it's a, if it's not someone else's fault, then we're on the hook to replace the vehicle.
But beyond, beyond the accidents, we do go through our vehicles, especially when you're talking about the sheriff's vehicles, the mileage on those extend their useful life. Currently, our ambulances have a useful life of miles as well, and I know we have at least ten to twelve ambulances that are already past a useful life. So, we do need to think through, and they're probably two or three years, but, and then the useful life is up, so they're not five-year useful life on our vehicles.
And I have, well, I have a couple more questions if you're finished with that. Okay. Because I just want to make sure I understand on a couple of these larger projects. So, on the new storage facility, it's four million for the design, and then the following year would be about forty-three million. And so, can you speak more to that? I just want to make sure that I understand that entire project, because if we're doing the four million on the design, then the forty-three millions to come.
So, the design will likely influence the second number. So, the second number is a placeholder, which we will evaluate it during the budget process next year. This fall, we'll, we'll be evaluating what it looks like to fund construction of, of that storage facility in twenty-five, and likely debt-finance that and the design together. So, so we would cash-flow the design until such time that we were ready to debt-finance the whole project.
And this storage facility is so that you will have everything, all storage is in this one facility, is that the intent, or can you speak more just to the need for this?
Yes, that is one. The other piece of that would be that a lot of county storage is on Valley Street. People love to vacate the Valley Street building instead of renovate and repair, and free that acreage back up to do DFI studies or sheriff needs, whatever that looks like. But right now, we have a lot of storage at Valley Street.
Okay, and then the other one, I just want to make sure, so the Woodfin renovation, basically twenty-eight million?
Which one is that?
Yes.
Thirty-five Woodfin, it's about twenty-eight million.
Yes, there's a lot of ADA work required due to the age of that building.
And so, with that one, it seems like I've heard us discuss whether or not potentially we'd end up doing a project there of affordable housing. That's one of, I'm just, so we're talking about spending twenty-seven million there, and then potentially...
So, the idea would be that we would look at our design, because we know that we do have to house county services somewhere. Would that be downtown on Woodfin? If it is, then we can talk about how would that be the first floor, and maybe have opportunities to put housing on top of housing in front, or some design, but we would need to have a design where we still have county services located somewhere. So, that would be intent, to have a true design of how we could make sure we have multiple uses of thirty-five Woodfin. But we do have to house county services.
How, how, how far along are the, like the plans for that scenario? Are they still pretty preliminary, or is that a pretty dialed-in number for that scenario? Or is it more of a placeholder?
This, this scenario that we have is only renovating thirty-five Woodfin, so if we are talking like DFI said, that we can do it better, we would need to go back and truly have an idea of how could we coexist with county services and affordable housing or commercial or something else on that course.
This is the renovation-only plan?
This is the renovation-only.
But with numbers that you feel like are pretty reliable, not over or under, they're pretty...
Pretty reliable. Well, in today's economy, escalation can always happen, but reliable as of today.
And so, the renovation then would be of the existing building, which means then we would not be able to proceed.
Correct.
One of those, I know DFI gave us a couple of options.
Correct.
It would limit our option.
But if, exactly, if we do this as is laid out next year, it would limit that option, but knowing that we want to look at this down the road further, we would want to go back and truly look, how could we do this project, spend this kind of money, with options to either go up or go out?
Other questions? Okay. All right, any other questions on capital for now? All right.
Before Mason leaves, you asked a question on fleet. Is the only other large equipment that we have, or are you interested in us looking to amend or...
There's not, I mean, there's not a lot on this year, I mean, it is mostly debt-financed on this year's building projects, right? I mean, there's a detention, there's a couple there, which, I mean, I'd be open to, for the reasons I expressed, to, you know, look at those, but it's, there's, it is mostly debt-financed on this year's building projects.
The one on detention centers mostly repairs, so we would not recommend that those repairs, two, two million, two-point-five million, we would not recommend that we look for, try to find a way to debt-finance those. We could talk about debt financing vehicles if that is something that you guys...
I would just raise it as a possibility. I mean, it sounds like it is something that is permissible. I mean, as we weigh in further into this budget, I anticipate very tough decisions. So, I mean, if, and if I turn out to be wrong, and oh, this is all easy, we got it done, and it's plenty of money, there's plenty of money, then maybe, maybe it won't come back up. I just raise it as like, hey, this is a lever that is out there to potentially use to help manage your cash on hand, basically, so, all right.
Just, just to add to, these are capital outlay, outlay items currently in the general fund, so you see the vehicles here, but we also have some elections funding. You'll actually hear from Corinne, our election services director at our next budget session, to explain more about the express vote system, which represents about six-hundred thousand dollars of, of elections capital outlay. But these are capital outlay items that are currently in the fiscal year twenty-four operating budget.
Any questions on any of these items in capital outlay?
Not for me.
I don't have any, thank you.
Last slide.
So, as we look at our budget by function in comparison with the adopted fiscal year twenty-three budget, you'll see an additional forty-eight-point-nine million dollars in requested expenditures, a twelve-point-two percent increase. Our largest increase in line with the top priority of this board identified in December is in public safety. The debt budget here is existing debt payments as well as estimated costs associated with going out for new debt on several capital projects currently out for bid or moving forward. Other financing sources includes the transfers to other funds to include transportation, affordable housing, conservation easements, reparations, economic development incentives, reappraisal of funding, and grant matches. And as I said before, we'll return to you with an in-depth discussion on revenues on April twenty-fifth and begin to tie this budget together. Do we have any other questions before we wrap up?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there anything in the budget so far that you think doesn't need to be there that we need to think about cutting right now? Is there any thoughts on anything that you saw that you want us to not move forward with?
That may be my phone, sorry. I was wondering where that was.
I didn't see anything worth cutting. I think, Brownie, you made a very astute point there about the value of debt financing some of this. The reality is we have so many plates we're juggling at this point, and I'd be hard-pressed to cut any program. Everyone's going to need and want more money in the years to come, so I appreciate you giving us a realistic set of numbers here that gives us a solid starting place for the conversations that I guess we can look forward to have.
I mean, there's lots of compelling, there's lots of compelling ideas in here. I mean, the, I mean, the total, I mean, the first, the first, I mean, the first pass is usually just sort of like, let's get everything on the table, right? I mean, just, but, so tell me if I'm not understanding this right, but Avril, you would anticipate the staff are going to do further work on this. The second pass number is going to be a lower number, not a bigger number, right? Or, I mean, that's the way we've, that's the way it's sort of looked each year that we've done this, but is that, are you anticipating that's sort of the way this will play out? And, and then, and then we start getting more into, okay, like, here's how much money we have, here's, here's the request, what do we, what do we do with this difference, right?
The intent would be that we, little it down, we have already cut some, there was a hundred and twenty-seven positions requested, you saw fifty today, so we have already started saying no to some things. The only unknown for me would be that education piece, I don't know where that's going to land.
And you haven't, I mean, so today was like forecasting a lot of the potential expenses, we didn't go over the revenues, right? So...
We're still, we're still working on those. We have preliminary numbers, and we're still working on those to drill down as much as we can, like property taxes, where do we think that's going to land? Where do we lease sales tax, which are our biggest revenue sources? So, making sure we get really good, solid numbers on those before we bring those to you.
Okay, but, so we'll hear more about that, but I mean, with the extent of the increases contemplated here, I mean, my working assumption is that this would not be a budget that could be supported with the current tax rate or even close to it.
Not even close.
Right, so, so I think there's a lot of compelling things here, you know, but I think there's also going to be priorities to be set, and some things that would be great to happen, some of them might need to happen over time, right? So, I mean, I don't think we're going to be able to do all this this year, so it's, you know, there's a lot of, I don't see anything here, I think, oh, this is, seems like a really, you know, no need to do this, but, but, but we're not going to be able to do it all, so I think there'll be priorities to be set, would be the way I would look at it.
Thank you.
Great information, great presentation. Any other comments or questions for now? All right, appreciate everybody, thanks for joining.